Alright, welcome everybody to the town board work session of Tuesday, April tenth two thousand eighteen. And we're gonna sorry for being running a little behind schedule, which is a norm unfortunately. Uh we're gonna start with our first thing is the Westchester County Airport issues impacting Newcastle residents. So we have a bunch of people here on the airport issue. And if you guys want to uh I I think you know we've been hearing uh we've been getting emails from people from residents especially you Warren. And um most of us are on Facebook and we see the the Facebook group of peaceful sky where a lot of concerns are raised on a daily basis. But that's Facebook and this is the town board work session and it's obviously public and everybody's on Facebook. So I think it's important to uh for you guys to come here. And Warren you've already done the email but I think it's important to come here and express some of the concerns that you're expressing on Facebook. So that we understand the issues um that Newcastle residents are appealing.
Can I just have a few more questions?
Sure absolutely. Well you guys can come up if you want who's ever speaking. Pull it up.
Just say your names.
Sure Warren Warren Gottlieb. Um excuse me for reading this but it took some time to prepare this some of this I probably said to each uh outside of tonight. Thank you for making time for me on tonight's schedule and for your service to the town. I'm somewhat hesitant to appear here tonight because I do truly appreciate the contribution that each of you make to the community. And I recognize that you have a difficult and often thankless job. With that as the predicate, I am here tonight to underscore the alarming increase in airplane noise that is affecting Newcastle residents. And to respectfully demand that the town board take meaningful, unmistakable and swift action in earnest to address the situation. I am here today with no agenda other than to say as one of your neighbors and constituents, the time is long overdue for you to act in earnest. As a near thirteen year resident of Newcastle, I am deeply concerned. The current situation is destroying the tranquility that for many residents served as the basis for the purchase of their homes. And it also represents an undeniable threat to property values throughout the hamlet. As Geddy Park and many other valued public spaces are being negatively impacted. You could also include the Bell School and Grafflin School in those two. Although I understand the limits of municipal government in this situation very well, in my judgment, more can be done. The issue if left unaddressed will hurt the community terribly and long into the future. It is high time that the town board, one, install a Newcastle representative on the Westchester County Airport Advisory Board. And two, equally importantly, publicly demand on a unified sustained basis that our county and federal elected officials address the situation in a meaningful fashion. In discussing the matter with fellow residents, many have expressed surprise and disappointment at the lack of urgency and focus of the town in addressing this matter, particularly given the other challenges affecting property values in the hamlet. Though I very much do and I mean this from the heart appreciate your collective service to the town and recognize that you will never ever make everyone happy. I am a bit concerned about the lack of meaningful response to what all sides of the of the issue or political spectrum I would say agree is a harmful and unacceptable situation. In my mind, the town board has two primary macro level functions. Promote safe the safety and welfare of residents and protect property values. With respect to the airport, I don't believe that this is being done. I believe that there is not an adequate response to the dangers posed. And I believe that as residents increasingly encounter the consequences of this circumstance during the upcoming outdoor months. They will want to know why in increasingly increasing numbers the town board hasn't done and isn't doing more. With this in mind, it is my sincere hope that you all work together to promptly address the problem. Understanding that the town has residents have to have reasonable expectations. But to promptly address the problem in earnest and I look forward to hearing your plans for doing so. As a first step, I would like to hear from each town board more vociferously about what their positions are with respect to the Westchester Airport privatization plans. Secondly, why there hasn't been an installed liaison on the airport advisory board to date. And third, lastly and most importantly, what specific steps are you taking to identify the necessary asks that we need to make of our elected federal and county representatives to protect our property values? And when will you begin demanding the required action of set officials? Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Jonathan.
Yeah.
You uh you started the group.
Yeah, I have I'm part of one actually so. Um if you just take one pass down thanks. Um so my name is Jonathan Wong, I um lead this group Citizens for a Responsible County Airport. Uh I live in Purchase. Um and the I guess my background is I'm actually a private pilot so I fly a small plane. Um and I like to think that that gives me a perspective on the technical aspects that that helps. Um counter a narrative that there's nothing we can do or um or you know that's technically impossible. Um so back in the end of February, I went to Long Beach uh in order to attend the Aviation Noise and Emissions Summit. Uh and there was some some good ideas from that that I think could be brought to bear here. Um I think ultimately you know a lot of of what controls the airport is regulated at the federal and the county levels, right? So um the FAA is responsible for all everything to do with flight paths. Um and aircraft operations and and federal law explicitly prohibits any localities from from dictating those. Um so I think to be an effective advocate at at those higher levels of government, uh I think it's important that each town um join with other towns both in Westchester and across the country um to demand action on the aviation airport noise issue. Um some concrete things I think you can do. So number one, uh my group is putting together a policy document that we will be presenting to the county. Um in order to ask for certain actions that the county can take to limit airport noise. Um so when that is ready, uh I hope that um the town will choose to adopt that. And also of course your input is is very welcome. I think on the federal level, um there are precious few groups that lobby for uh aviation noise restrictions. Unfortunately, nature of the beast is that we're the little guy and uh the airlines and the corporate jet operators are the big guy. Um but there is one group called uh NOISE N O I S E uh that does that sort of advocacy. And if the town is interested in joining that group, I think the annual fee is like on the something like a thousand dollars. It's not a huge fee. Um and that would presumably give the town some insight and opportunity to influence. Um legislation and regulations are happening at the federal level that govern um air traffic. I think that that is actually fairly pressing because there has been a renewed interest in um airport noise at the at national level because of a program called Next Gen which basically concentrates flight paths. Um I think that is not in my opinion as a pilot, I don't think that's what's happened here for Newcastle. I think what's likely happened here, but we don't have the data yet, uh but what's likely happened is that there's been a a move to larger uh private jets. And I think that is likely why there's increased noise impacts for Newcastle. Um the reason I bring that up though is that as awareness has grown nationally um there's a risk of of regulations for airport noise tilting towards those communities and not towards our communities, right? I think that um it's a makeup of the the communities that influence this lobbying group are primarily uh people affected by uh by airline noise um that may not best represent our interests. Uh because eighty-five percent of flights at the airport are private jets or private aircraft and they're not airlines. And so in some ways, we have a much more challenging problem uh where rather than regulating, you know, a handful of airlines, we've got to deal with thousands of private operators. Um I think additionally, uh I think we have a narrow window potentially to um file an Article seventy-eight lawsuit against the county. So back in in March in May of twenty sixteen, the county approved a um lease with Millionaire. And Millionaire is a rather cheekily named uh company that serves as a private terminal for um private aircraft. Up until May of twenty sixteen, they were restricted to serving aircraft under under twelve thousand five hundred pounds. The county approved a lease, a thirty year lease in May of twenty sixteen that lifted that cap and allowed them to build a seventy thousand square foot hangar. Um I've also heard through the grapevine that they are currently seeking approval for a second new hangar with the county. Um of course, that lease was approved without an environmental impact statement. Uh the county did a short form CQ that found no significant impact. As I'm sure as you all know, the statute of limitations for for that Article seventy-eight is four months, uh which is long gone. But I think there is a possibility that if we could find a a plaintiff that was under eighteen in May of twenty sixteen, they could potentially avail themselves of the infancy provision for the statute of limitations, which gives them until May of twenty eighteen uh to bring a lawsuit. Now I I realize this is a this is a bit of a hail Mary. Um but I think the alternative is accepting the existence of this facility for next thirty years, which uh is I think unacceptable. Um yeah, so so that's sort of what I have off the top of my head in terms of of actions the town can take immediately. Um so I think join lobbying groups that that advocate for less noise nationally. Um potentially look into promoting awareness of the issue and uh and trying to seek a or support a Article seventy-eight against the county. Um I think certainly lobbying the county to restrict airport development and make them know that that this is a serious issue affecting our towns. Uh especially in conjunction with other um jurisdictions and advocacy groups um to show show the county government that um business as usual must end. Uh and of course, I'm available as a resource uh at at your pleasure so.
So I'm just curious on this sort of join with other municipalities. So there's seven municipalities that sort of fall within sort of the targeted noise zone. And there were supposed to be noise monitors placed in all seven uh municipalities. And I think the noise monitors just sort of went away.
So the airport does maintain a network of noise monitors. I have my doubts as to uh how well they function. Uh I did receive documents under foil showing that they are tested and calibrated every year. Um.
But I think we're supposed to have one but don't.
Uh there is one in in Newcastle. I don't remember the exact location, but there is one.
It's Carolyn Place.
Yeah.
Carolyn Place because I went looking for the data associated with those reports just to sort of see what the monitors, which is theoretically supposed to be a machine so they're more empirical.
Yeah. Well, I think it's it's you know it's it's a device on a pole somewhere. But I think the challenge with the noise monitors is that the FAA's noise metric is preordained to find no significant impact.
No, I understand.
Uh right, so uh but there is there is actually action at the federal level to um to change that, right? So there's a group called the Quiet Skies Caucus uh in the House of Representatives where Needaloe apparently recently joined. Um thanks hopefully thanks to our advocacy. Uh and they have called for the FAA to come up with a new noise standard. Um I think that was I believe that was a provision of the Omnibus Bill that was just passed. I'm I'm not sure, but I believe so. Um and so I think it is important that we remain remain engaged on that in order to um in order to make sure that we're represented, right? So so sort of getting back to my point about airlines and Next Gen. Um most of the members of the Congressional Quiet Skies Caucus represent urban areas near major international airline airports. Um we're in a bit of a different situation. And if a standard gets enacted that um is acceptable for main street unflushing, that may very well not be acceptable for you know a backyard in Chappaquaud. Uh so.
Could be done by airport side or some of this sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, right? So.
But and but I wanted to also make the point that you know back when I think we first met you and Christina and so on and so forth. It was over it was last fall I think about you know Jeremy, you know, one of the things is to kind of you know do it on a on a on a coordinated town basis. So it wasn't just one town, you know, doing it, but try to get multiple towns to do it.
Right.
Because then it would be a chorus instead of a lone voice.
Right.
Um so an email was sent out, you know, identified all the towns that, you know, fall within the flight path. And an email was sent out saying this and not one response, not one. So my question to you, just to like because I think it would be more effective is you've been going to towns and various towns advocating the position purchase is definitely effective for sure. Have you had any receptivity so that we could coordinate with them? Is there people that you know that we should have talked to?
Uh well, I think I think.
I mean I mean I guess I guess I was gonna ask the same thing. I I'm really interested in knowing is there a town that's doing it that's doing it well? So if we're not doing enough.
Yeah.
And and I'm open to that that opinion. If we're not doing enough, who who's doing it better and who can we go to and try to emulate?
Yeah, I. Frankly, I don't know that anyone's doing anything, right? So I'm I'm a volunteer and I do this in my spare time. Uh you know, I know that Rybrook has an airport advisory council. Um I think they meet very infrequently. In fact, I don't know when their last meeting was. Um if they had one since last October. Um I mean unfortunately, that's that's sort of the nature of this is it's hard to build that coalition. Um and so.
But I think a coalition would be more effective because it's not just one county representative at this point. It's multiple.
I I'm yeah. Absolutely, and I think.
And as you know, some of the county representatives, you know, we may be a a part of their flight path, but the rest of this area that he represents is not, so yeah.
Well, I mean.
So that's why I'm thinking coalition whether would be the most effective way and even if as you make your round and you find a sympathetic ear, like I think I I'd be willing to work with other towns to try and make it a bigger thing than just us alone.
Right, so I think um to that end, I think you know my group's gonna try to put together a policy. We well, we put together a policy statement and maybe that's something that we can shop around the towns. Probably easier to just sign something that that or comment on something that's been prepared already versus doing something de novo. Uh you know, I think the the national lobbying group is probably a a reasonable um thing to join simply because that connects you to towns all over the country.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I think that's how we have to proceed. Uh I certainly agree that there needs to be more active um participation. Um and you know, quite frankly, uh as a volunteer, it's difficult for me to go to every town and and make an appeal to them in person, but I think.
Yeah, but I mean but to your peaceful skies, I mean.
Yeah, is there grassroots in every town the way that there is here?
I think it's kind of diffuse. Um you know, I think Peaceful Sky is one of the most active online forums that are concerned about this. Um you know, informally, I think my sense is that there's a number of people in Rybrook that are affected. Uh but I don't know sort of where they gather and where the information flows. Um you know, I know that that there's a gentleman by the name Peter Schlauchus who's the chairman of the Rybrook Airport Advisory Council. And in the past, uh when there was threatened airport development, uh he managed to get a coalition together to to oppose that. Um I think he's been pretty busy, so it's been hard for me to get him involved to to reassemble that coalition.
Mm-hmm.
Um but you know, it's something that that we should all do. Um you know, is there more? Can you do more than send an email to to the town boards of affected towns? I think probably.
No, no, I think you do is an email and phone calls.
Uh and I think that might be one.
Good, there's there's two different there's there's no phone calls, but it's two different issues here. Okay, when when the last letter was sent out, there's two issues that are always intermingled and they shouldn't be. Last last year, it was political season and you you know as well as I do with this privatization. And it was something that was used in the county election. Um that was something that was used against um what's it uh Ron Estorina.
Asking, right.
There's no question about that, okay? But that's that's done, okay? The privatization is an issue that we should talk about. But this is not about the privatization. This is about the fact that Westchester County is the third busiest airport in the country for charter and private jets. That's what this problem is about. This problem is about that Westchester County Board of Legislators has rubber stamped every single lease that went before it. Maybe they were trying to increase the value in expectation anticipation of privatization, who knows? But right now, there's tons of leases that were long term leases that were approved.
Mm-hmm.
And by the and and also saying that it's a coalition of Westchester towns. The truth is that if you don't have an airplane flying over your head, you like Westchester County Airport, right? If anybody can get a flight out of Westchester County Airport, it's a pleasure, right? But when you have airplanes flying over your head, and that's not every town, that's only some towns. Those towns are getting affected more than the others. The other towns are probably thrilled with Westchester County Airport. And we didn't have peaceful sky two years ago, right? When was that web group started? Last year. This is a recent issue. If somebody moves into Rybrook, they know what they're getting into. There's an airport in their backyard. Their property values are already adjusted for that. It's not a surprise to them. We didn't have this issue ten years ago, five years ago, three years ago. This is our issue right now and we as a town board, I agree with you Warren one hundred percent, have responsibility to do something for our residents whose property values are being affected. And we could talk about coalitions all day long, but at the end of the day, somebody's gotta take the lead. And we should be the ones because we've been the ones who have affected over this last year. And our property values are being affected. Now, they don't fly over my house per se, but the people who's affected are really suffering.
We're working on it.
So I do have planes fly over my house on the bad weather route, so low and slow over the house.
Yeah, I mean, I think um I think that's true prob- um I would take some issue with the argument that this affects, you know, that sort of people in Rybrooks are new what they're getting and not here. I think it is absolutely true that that there's been uh more of an outcry in Chappaquaud in the last year or two, right? That's absolutely true. Um and I believe that that correlates or is caused by an increase in the noise. Um however, I will note that the what's called the final approach fix, so where the planes are supposed to line up when they land in the south, has been over Chappaquaud for quite some time.
Yes.
Uh because that is a point five miles away from the runway. That's where it is in at substantially every airport in the country. And so that's always been there. I think it's likely that um there's been a change in the types of aircraft that use Westchester County Airport, right? So um you know, if you pull up the the flights that are that are coming out of there every day now, there's flights going to London. There's flights going to you know, South America, Bahamas, whatever. And these are large corporate jets that are, I mean, they're large. I mean, they're as big as an airliner, right? And so I think that change of the mix may um be responsible for the increase in noise. So I think, you know, I I agree that someone should take a lead. However, I think that a coalition is still important because if you look at how many households are affected by the noise, it's it's really not that many, right? It's a line if you take a you shoot a line straight across straight out from the airport runway. You know, go half mile on either side and that's roughly who's impacted.
I mean, I I would just add that I don't think that the idea of forming a coalition to deal with this, you know, sort of, you know, cross town cross municipality um sort of way is meant at all to suggest that, you know, we are trying to pass the buck. I think that the idea is just that we're trying to think about how to be most effective in our advocacy. And joining with other towns may make it more effective than trying to go at it alone.
I I I and I didn't mean to imply that we go at it alone. I'm just saying we take the lead and we we're the ones who form the coal get other towns to form, but we should be the ones who take the lead. And you're right, sending a letter, which mostly was about privatization anyway, uh but sending a letter that deals directly with the fact that this these leases that are rubber stamped and not only this, you know, we can talk about charter and private jets all day long, but the Uber is the problem too, right? I mean, now it's like you could you could rent, you could get a seat on this private jet.
Yeah.
That costs you the same amount of money as a first class seat on a commercial jet.
Right.
And you don't have to go through the uh security.
Right.
So you know, that's what people are using. That's why they have all these big charter jets. I mean, they're basically Ubers in the air.
Yeah.
I mean, that's it's Westchester, it's the third largest airport in the country. That's our problem right there.
So I'm I don't know if it's the third largest private aircraft airport in the country. It's the third it's the third busiest airport in New York State and it's certainly up there in terms of uh private aircraft operation in the country, but yeah.
So in terms of the um are there, is there a central source to actually look at size, weight of plane, you know, any of that kind of stuff?
I mean, I think the airport probably has the data. Um whether they're willing to share it with you is is a different matter.
The town could request that data.
You could. Um I think.
Make it easier.
The question I always have is is is.
You can foil us.
Well, well, here's here's my my issue, right? So so I think it's easy to drown in data and I want to try to get data that's actionable.
Correct.
Right, so let's say that we see a increase in the average size of private jet using Westchester County Airport, then what? Right, county doesn't have the ability because of federal law to restrict that. Um you know, things that we can do is we can advocate for less development, right? We can advocate for no new leases. We can advocate for shortening the runway. That would be a big help. Um but you know, that's sort of independent of of what the mix is, right? You only need the data really if you're being gaslighted and told that, well, there's no change. And I think.
Well, the thing is, I think first if you can quantify the change and it's a measurable change, it's the first step in recognizing there's a problem, right?
Then then no, I'll.
And then the second, the second thing is if they're actually considering expanding another seventy thousand square foot hangar. Um you know, I don't wanna say it the wrong way, but you know, what we don't want because there's gonna just be increased demand for air travel. That's not going away.
Right.
And so what we wanna do is, yes, it's horrible now for those who live in the flight path, but it could be way worse. And so I think, you know, just if 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 we have approved long term leases, you know, you can't pull the rug out from underneath the contract, but what can you do to make sure it doesn't get worse?
And and each of those leases is has their own terms about how they're structured and you wanna make sure that we're managing those leases to ma- to maximize the quality of life, you know, throughout the county.
Right.
The other thing I want, I lose my cut. The data is is tricky. And you talked about, you know, you wanna get acknowledgement that there is, you know, things have gotten worse. The numbers that I see, enough numbers now between going back twenty five years, you can't trust the numbers at face value. Just because because of the change in mix, you don't know exactly, you know, how they're appro- I I got some data about the uh the flights that approach from the north over the past couple of years. But to compare those planes, even from year to year, you know, it's different plane mix. It's different uh different different uh airlines and how they how they choose to approach. If it's a visual approach, they have more flexibility, right? In terms of how they're gonna do this. Uh if you look at where the noise noise monitors are, there's none up where we are. Though there is one in Newcastle on on Carolyn Place.
Is Carolyn Place the one over on our monk or the one down there?
Yes, it's 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 right.
By our terrace.
Near Wicklow.
Yeah, we're well, we're well.
It's yeah, it's close to where you get to.
It's east of us.
Right.
There's there's Carolyn Lane too, when I always get clear.
You're right. Yeah. And there's there's also and the other one is.
Yeah, they are both. Can I ask you a question too?
Old warm road, which is right off of of Bay Ridge.
I I know these are private airlines, so I don't know what the FAA type restrictions are.
Yeah.
But I have noticed too, it seems like in addition to an increased number of planes, they seem to me to be significantly lower than they should be. I mean, I can, I feel like I can see people in the place. And I mean, that's a little bit of exaggeration, but they're very low. And I don't, are there rules around that?
So the F okay, so the FAA.
And ways to check and make sure that this.
Yes, so the FAA says that the rule says that um over a populated area, you have to be a thousand feet above um the tallest structure in a two thousand foot radius. Right, that is that is the rule.
Mm-hmm.
Except except for helicopters and except if you're landing or or departing an airport. Right, uh and that's text the regulation, right? Now, how does FAA enforce it? Uh you know, I have observed aircraft that I believe and I've, you know, I have uh devices that that gather their reported altitudes and positions. Um you know, I've observed aircraft that I believe have violated violated the regulation. I've referred to the FAA and they've said we investigated, we found no nothing wrong. Right, so I think unless there's something really egregious, which is, you know, one buzzing a house at, you know, two hundred feet above it, FAA probably is not gonna do anything. Um.
But that doesn't mean you can't have constructive conversations, maybe overly optimistic with some of the airlines, with somebody like NetJetz.
Which is really a tall tower.
And say, you know, what can you do to do do this?
Well, you you could build a tall tower, but but you have to, you know, it has to be approved by the FAA.
Yeah. Yeah.
For you to do that, so but yes, that would be very effective if you get that approval. Um you know, if you have any trees, like if you have a tall tree in town, like water the tree a lot, that that would be that would be useful.
Christina.
Cell tower, it looks like a tree.
Yeah, um I have been working on the on the page and at first I wanted to gain like gain. Like gain more people from other towns. Um, and I realized that that tact tactic is actually not effective, because we are getting attention from people who are living very close to the airport. And the they, and then who are not from our town, from our mom present and our monk area. And so those people are are very close to the airport and are supposed to get more airport noise. But what we need to make sure is Chappaqua is not that close to the airport and we are not supposed to get that much noise. So we have to differentiate that. So when we get, we do coalition with other towns, we get mixed up. So now it doesn't become our issue, but everybody's issue. So we are actually not getting things done for our own town. So actually, I believe that it's better to do our town and make sure they fly higher and safer. And and make sure they 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 draw well their pattern, so that they are not constantly on the same route, whatever.
But the thing is, there's that's just, if that is the expectation, right? If that is the ask. That is. Very complicated ask, because the weather dictates the flight patterns. You know, there's a whole lot of other stuff, the height, the plane and the approach for the safety of the passengers on the plane. There's a whole lot of other things. That is, I think, to take Chappaqua alone and say. Cut the planes flying over Chappaqua and distribute our noise pollution over other towns. Is going to be a very difficult ask. But I think that if what we do is work with the. Towns in Armonk and the other things, because there's genuine concern that the amount of traffic and the amount of. Frankly, I think it sounds like enforcement.
Yeah.
Um, is only going to. Get worse if or, you know, and maybe even enforcement today could make it better. But I think for us to sort of say, you know, only deal with Chappaqua, move the air traffic over somewhere else, there's so much more. There's such a big overlay over that, that that is an unrealistic set of expectations and I don't wanna be the person to say it. But that is something that's like, you know.
I think we have to be really careful about how we frame this.
Yeah.
And and I think.
It's not one where we're where we're trying to indicate that we as Chappaqua feel that. You know, we have some special entitlement that other surrounding towns don't have.
Right.
No, 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 no.
You know, I I frankly don't even really feel a hundred percent comfortable with the argument that folks purchased in Rybrook knowing that they were going to, what they were getting into, but we didn't know when we bought here. I think we are much better off if we make an argument that's inclusive of all of the surrounding towns at the airport as well, just focusing on ourselves and I need.
And I think, I think many, many things that that suggests.
Explain better.
Oh, sure.
So our our land.
Everybody should say that.
I know that's not what she's saying. I just wanna be careful about how we frame this.
They are supposed to be, they are supposed to be at two thousand feet above Chappaqua.
Yeah.
And they're not doing it.
Right. That's why I'm talking about enforcement.
Right? But if I compare to another guy who live in mom place and all Armonk, they are not supposed to be at two thousand feet above.
Right, they're closer to the airport.
So we have the right to have have them far from us.
Okay, fair enough.
They don't have the right.
That's better.
That's better, aren't they? That's good, that's fair.
Yes, so we can ex- uh uh we can act and to respect that, which they are not respecting now.
That's totally fair.
And 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 the thing is also, let's let's not, the Westchester Airport Advisory Board has seven seats for neighboring towns. They don't have, how many towns are there in Westchester? Thirty one, what, how many are there in Westchester? I don't even know. Thirty one, maybe? There's not thirty one seats on that advisory board. There are seven seats. And how do they choose the seven? They choose the seven by the municipalities that are most affected by the airport. So let's not, we can't kid ourselves that everybody is affected the same way. I agree with you one hundred percent, Chris. We have to advocate for Newcastle. That's a where elected to do, to advocate for Newcastle. And I'm not saying shift it to North Castle, but I don't see North Castle having a meeting like this. And I don't see other towns having a meeting, because they're not as affected as we are right now. And we wouldn't have had this meeting two years ago. We may not even had this meeting one year ago. This is a problem that is affecting our town that we have to do something about and we can't just ignore it, which is essentially what we're doing. The election is over. It was seemed to be a hot issue for the election, but that's over. That was November. This problem is still here. This is not an election issue. This is a quality of life issue for Newcastle residents. It's not Chappaqua, it's Newcastle residents. And that's our responsibility sitting on this board.
And I think that the, one of the benefits.
So Jill, one of one of the things I would be interested to find out, because it seems like getting the um. Empirical data from the FAA or from the Westchester County Airport or all the records should not be. Impossible. Um, in a format that's manipulable, manipulable. And I think that if we make a formal request, and I don't wanna go back twenty five years, we're saying this is a recent phenomenon, the past two to three years. So I think we only need to go back five years.
And what do we have to do exactly?
Well, I.
Frequency.
I actually think, well, I mean, I think we need to have, you know, general flight path. Uh, we need to have picks, a couple of coordinates in Newcastle and ask for altitude. We need to know the plane type size. And then I'm sure there is a standard, like if we had got somebody who actually was an FAA expert or retired guy or whatever. They would know, be able to look at the model of the plane, know what the decibels are and. You know, help us formulate a way to actually get our arms around the magnitude of change. And then I think on the separate issue, there's other things that I do think adding another seventy thousand square foot hangar is only gonna increase the traffic.
Right.
Of course. And that is not something, I mean, at a certain point, that's something that again. Across towns, people would have vested interest in the seven, in the seven communities most directly impacted.
So County Executive Latimer has a good neighbor policy, which you may be aware of.
Yes.
And according to this good neighbor policy, that anytime something is before the county board of legislators that affects one of the neighbor communities, they're supposed to let us know.
And he might be here on Saturday.
Yes. So I will point out that um. Sorry, I wanna I wanna address one point about that first. So there are um various consultants that do that kind of environmental modeling.
Oh.
So this, I mean, something that is done fairly commonly.
I figured it must be, I figured it must be done with somebody special.
Yeah, I mean. Well, it's done frequently, because you know, if if a hair wants to build a runway, for example, right, they need to do an environmental impact statement and part of that is modeling the noise. Um, so so, you know, there are companies do this. I think. I would support that, but I wonder if if the outcome of that would change what the town should be doing to advocate, right?
No, well, the only reason is because right now it's it's hard to advocate to just go and say, hey, there seem to be a lot more planes and it seems to be noisy. They're gonna say, well, how do you, where are your numbers? It's much more effective, in my view, to be able to go with numbers and say, look. The number of planes has increased to this, the 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 height of the planes has decreased to this.
That's fair, that's fair.
You know, and be able to advocate with actual facts in hand as opposed to saying, which we know anecdotally is true.
Right.
But somebody maybe sitting in in white planes doesn't necessarily know that it's true.
And I really, I really caution you though, that when you get into these discussions about numbers, that they can be twisted.
That's why we need to have our own independent expert if we're prepared to do it.
Yeah, but but you, yeah, right, it's we look, so. I I wouldn't get into a battle about numbers until you you've really dug deep. Because, you know, you can have. Ten times more planes coming over, or if the flight path was different, you wouldn't care. And so, not saying, but you, it's a, it's a.
But the flight path is what the flight path is to a certain extent.
Or or or. It's not, it's really not. And this where the crazy aspect comes, if you look even on the basic level of the. The Westchester County Airport monitor, which has has the best level of radar that you'll get. You can see planes, two planes, two, you know, two JetBlue planes, two big planes. And one will take up over, you know, like by, they'll make the turn over 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 where T-town is. And the other one will make the turn over Wil- Wil- Golf Course.
Right, and it depends, it's all that.
And and there's no rhyme or reason. And those both regulations.
There is a, there is a rhyme or reason. So back, and I I I I can't remember, Jerry Fiala was there. And it was way back, so, you know, way back when, they actually changed the airplane routes. And so they knew the incoming route and the outgoing, whether you're going north, south, east, west, there is a standard pattern for like takeoff and landing. And the weather changes, it changes.
I know, I.
All that stuff. So there is, there is a pattern and um. Newcastle, in that article, it was not well publicized, but it's something I distributed. Definitely got more planes at that point. More planes flew over us. But I think that.
And and I don't know who calls those things, but sometimes you see things that are one after another. And it really makes you, and when there's no, sometimes you'll see they do it because it's busy and they have to fit into the the cycle coming down. Other times, there's another another plane in the sky. And they just, and there's no rhyme or reason that's obvious, okay? The wind hasn't shifted and two minutes later, they go one, they go the other. You think the bigger plane would would go farther to give it a bigger, and it doesn't. And so I don't know who makes the call. I don't know if it's the shift change of the FAA, the guy in the dark room pushing it. I don't know what's happening, but somebody should, that's part of the investigation is to understand.
I think maybe we should have, we should add this to the agenda to see if we wanna hire an expert to help us get to the bottom of the numbers and quantify the problem.
We know, we know there's, we know there's a problem. We don't need to spend money. There's a problem. The room is filled with people telling us there's a problem. Talk to their people on a peaceful sky. There's a problem and it just started, it started a year ago. And here's the thing. The numbers are controlled by the airport, like you said, right? The numbers are not, the numbers are gonna be skewed. Like when you said you make a complaint and they come back and they say everything is fine. We all know you can't trust them. The one thing that we can look at the numbers that actually are easy to to ascertain is the number of leases that have been approved over the last ten years, right? They're not getting leases to sell chocolate bars. They're getting leases to fly planes. That a certain percentage are coming over our community. Therein lies the problem. That's the numbers that are important. Why do they keep on rubber stamping these leases?
I think it's both. I think that's a one of the, that's one, that's the main issue, right? Is that they've been increasing the number of leases. But to Rob's point, if the planes were flying higher, maybe we wouldn't notice as much. So I think it's a, it's both. I think we have to attack them on the lease front and then attack them on the compliance front.
I'm just, I'm just saying the lease front, they can't, they can't argue with the numbers.
No, no, that's much easier.
The numbers can't be fudged. And the fact is, look at the numbers. And that article, which I got the third business airport in Westchester from and and the country from. That talked about some of these, some of these airlines, they've doubled the amount of planes that they've had over the last five years. So you look at the leases, look at the amount of planes that each of these carriers have, what they had five years ago, what they have today. Those are the numbers that don't lie.
So so I wanna point out, I think um. I'm not sure that the absolute number of leases has actually changed significantly. I think that the most significant change in recent memory was the millionaire lease that allowed them to serve.
The heavy.
The heavy aircraft as well as the new seventy thousand square foot hangar. Um, I think the nature of federal law is that the county cannot restrict the number of aircraft using the airport. And so whether there were five leases or ten leases, um. It's still, you know, I think that's not going to be. As impactful as simply what facilities are available, right? And the point is like the new hangar is a disaster, because that is a new facility that increases capacity. Um, you know, whether whether, you know, the tenant occupying this hangar is, uh, you know, jet systems or millionaire is is not as impactful. Um, I would also point out that attacking the leases is kind of closing the barn after the horse has already left, because I believe the first one expires in twenty forty something at this point. So.
But 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 it's, but it is important in the context of any of these leases, just like we have two right now. There's billionaire who wants more.
Yeah.
And there's Textron, and and that chance.
Right, right.
That they want some amendment to their lease.
Right.
And these people seem to be constantly coming back.
Yeah, so they're having.
To the county. And when they want something, as there's an opportunity, you know, to say, we we need to be a better, a better neighbor. If something's gonna happen. And this is just be part of the process, because right now, I don't wanna call people bad neighbors, but the sense that I think there's room for improvement.
You know, we should write a letter, you know, to Latimer and the county legislators, just saying, look, you just enacted this good neighbor policy. We understand these things are being considered. We're putting you on notice that we need to be consulted on these matters. And then at least we know that nothing is getting. Is will be hopefully passed without our being aware of it and being able to have input on.
And I think, you know, it, when you, when there's representation on the airport advisory board too, I think. You're closer to the source, to the property management and to the airport management, where you can understand what's happening on a more frequent basis. Where, you know, I think there's a better relationship now too. I think the infrastructure committee down at the at the BOL realizes that. Regardless of what the motivations were in the past, that maybe this is something that they overlooked, okay?
Sorry.
And so that, you know, we need to have contact. Mary Jane needs to know that we need to hear from her.
Jill. Hi, I'm Jill. Um, I am just a resident and I I follow this conversation. But I don't have a lot of knowledge. I've, when I read things online, I report it to what Rob said earlier. Don't just post on Facebook and that's why I'm here. I heard of the meeting, so I showed up. Um, anytime there's anything on Facebook saying, right, this legislator, I've done it every single time. And I've gotten some responses back, but I was really just shocked by how when, you know, people who represent us wanna get something done, it does get done. And I hear nothing except for all these volunteers and all their hard work. But there's just nothing at a higher level. And so in my mind, I'm kind of wondering why, what what's the impediment? Why are we not doing anything? I mean, you know, I've lived here for ten years and I can say, I have four small kids, a husband that loves the backyard. We are in the backyard every day, morning to night. Um, every summer till ten P M. It wasn't until last year that we really noticed it, when my Chicago family said, gosh, living here is worse than living in O'Hare, by O'Hare. And they live in the flight path of O'Hare. They have new doors, new windows on their houses because of it. But they remarked how my backyard is worse. And I was horrified and embarrassed, of course, but, because I just, it just hit me, I'm like, wait, when did this change? And I'm listening tonight, I almost wonder, were they going over Carolyn Place, which is less populated? And that noise monitor was installed and now they've shifted over town? Is there something about that? I don't know what's going on and. But every time I've reported it and I've talked to the airport, just because once you report it, people call you back. They said to me that the numbers haven't changed. It's not that. Maybe they're probably flying lower and like you said, bigger airplanes. Um, but it's impacting us more as a town. And whether or not other towns are doing it, you know, it's like you can lead the effort. And in this case, unfortunately, it's not gonna go away. The leases are there, the planes are there. But I do believe in some ways that if you ask and nobody else is asking. You may get something and maybe becoming a little bit of a bother to them and letting them know that we care. They'll do things. Like when I called this one guy at Westchester, I was asking him even like, does it matter if the president's here or like, you know, if Clinton is here? And, you know, of course, back in the day when he was president, it did. Now it does not matter, you know? And I was like, well, why? And it depends on the winds. So, you know, just trying to like learn a little bit, but. Trying to understand what the difference is. And and basically, every plane that I've reported has been well within the rules. I said to the guy, well, then what can we do? Like, what? They're not doing anything, you know? He said, well, you know, the planes could take off at a higher altitude. You know, but that could, I don't know if it costs them fuel or whatever it is. But these are things I think that the more people ask and the more we get involved as a community, whether or not other communities are on board. We're not gonna get anything unless we ask. And every little bit helps. And the whole town, whether or not it's over your house, doesn't matter, because it's over our schools, it's over our parks. It's over our property values. Nobody knows if you live half a mile outside of the sound, you know what I mean? And it's, it's to the point where people are not having parties in their backyard.
That's true.
It is like I have a communion coming up. I don't wanna do it in my backyard, just in case the winds blow the right way and then I'll have to explain, you know, it's. It's that kind of thing that we have to ask for something and and maybe I was saying, maybe if we go after them, let's ask the county to pay for new doors and windows for everybody in in our town. Maybe then they'll say, okay, wait a second, we need to change something here, because we don't wanna go down that road.
That is an excellent point, because I know the guys over, I was in a friend's house in, um. God, what's it called? Uh, you know. Cedarhurst. You know, and I gotta tell you something, like, you wanna talk about noise?
My old haunts.
Oh my god, but. The airlines have a fun to basically add insulation, add insulated windows, put in the doors, so that at least if you're in your house. You're not feeling, you know, and we're talking two hundred feet above your head. So.
And there is no official curfew. It's just a courtesy. So like overnight and we don't want, we don't want new doors and windows and not be able to go in the backyard.
And that's another, that's. That's a big point. People within the flight path may be entitled to money.
But maybe if we try to, you know, pressure them a little bit, we can get something out of this, which is just a better quality of life.
It might be. Yeah.
But even.
It's not gonna help your backyard to get more.
The the money, I think most people up here are here for the clock and and the outside.
Backyard.
Nobody wants new windows. They want it, they want the planes to be uh higher, so you don't hear them.
And I, you know.
You used to see them in the distance, but now they're just right over the top.
I I think, I think I can.
Why think you both?
See the people in place.
Right, right. And so many of these, so many of these, they're not mutually exclusive. The the, you know, I think you wanna use every every arrow in your quiver here, because everything you push to to make things better. Helps us as a community. It probably helps the county a- as a whole as well. I don't think too many of these things really, you know. Are kind of like a, a zero sum game. I guess if you alter the. I guess if you alter the flight path, you know, to some extent, that, that could be viewed as a zero sum game. But I like your flight path issues is kinda, you wanna minimize the time that a plane's ever land. That, to me, it's, it's, it's that simple. I mean, that's oversimplification, but if, if you're gonna take a plane and, and have it, you know, fifteen miles over land, making noise pollution, air pollution. Versus it can be over six miles to land, I choose six miles. To me, it's a pretty easy, you know, without, if I'm not compromising safety, which of course is paramount. You wanna make sure that, you know, you're discomforting as few people as possible. Hence, you can stand it. Look, I think there are lots of things. So I, I think, you know, it doesn't have to be a one way or the other. I think we actually throw everything we have because you don't know which way is gonna work. And if one way ends up working, we does, you don't wanna put all your eggs in one basket here. I don't know which way is gonna end up being more successful. And last, last gonna say is, I hope I say that, is that the probably won't be, probably a lie. Um, is that the airport is still in the news. And even though the election is over, they hadn't decided on airport privatization. So I think right now is a real important time to still be pushing this because the airport is still very topical. And a couple of years from now, it may not be nearly as topical. And so while the airport is still fresh in everybody's minds, I think, you know, you wanna make sure that, you know, we address both these issues. Because, you know, an unfettered privatization, I think, would, would be disastrous for all of us up here in the flight path. But maybe there is a, I could imagine a privatization that actually tighten things up. Who knows? There, there are lots of ways to structure things, but it's topical now. And I think that's why we need to press now. And we need to make sure, you know, I think it's still very much on the county executive's mind. It, it's gotta be at the top of his list of things he has to deal with.
It's got a big budget hole to fill.
I don't know. I think his, I think number one is his big budget hole, yeah.
Okay, but, but, but that, that requires him making some, some decision on the airport. So while the airport's there, it's a very much, it's a separate issue, but it is still an airport issue.
Eric, you have a question?
Where I live on Hamilton, um, I'm right underneath the flight path, on the north south run. Um, probably closer to the planes than almost any other place in town. Few, few of my neighbors live a little bit further. It's directly over our house. Number one, they've been coming in for years. They're coming in at approximately the same height. As far as I'm concerned, they're probably on instrument rules flying on the glide path. And that puts them at that particular elevation when they pass over my house. And would therefore be a little bit higher, further out, a little bit lower, closer down in. Cause that's standard procedure. If you're on instrument rules, you get on the flight path. I, by the way, I used to have a commercial license, but I haven't for years. But you follow the standard. So that's not gonna be able to deviate unless for some reason the F C C, excuse me, the FAA was prepared to, to increase the angle of the flight class. And I don't think that they're prepared to consider that. I think there's an increase in flights, but I don't think that that's geared necessarily to the leases. Because there are a lot of planes that come in, pick up passengers and promptly go out. The question of the data on the planes coming in and stuff of this nature, that should be known to the airport, should be foilable. I'm sure the county has already gotten it, so it should be foilable from the county. If we wanted to set up a monitor for noise elevation, I don't think that would be all that expensive.
It's not that going up on the top of Hamilton, uh, which would be probably the closest, and.
You can put it by the top of town hall right here.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's four, five hundred feet less than what I'm talking about.
Though Hamilton's high now.
Uh, I'm just simply saying is that we could get, we could get an acoustical engineer to come out at a relatively inexpensive cost.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a good idea. Good idea.
And run a, uh, on a Friday night, uh, and a Monday morning, uh, when there's a lot of people going out, a lot of people coming in, et cetera. And get some monitoring so we know what we're really talking about in terms of the noise level. The FAA, I periodically read magazines from the, which talks about this entire issue nationwide. But there are, there are standards that the FAA will discuss and not discuss. Flight path, I don't think you're gonna get anything on. Question of whether or not we might be able to talk them into slightly uh, deeper uh, angle. I don't know. I just, I'm not a hundred percent sure as far as that's concerned. Terms of number of planes coming in and leasing, that falls into the question of what the county is doing. And really has to be, we have to talk to the county reps in terms of what they're thinking about in terms of the growth. The question of privatization is on hold at this point. It's gonna be reopened uh, in some form or the other. So I think that the town and maybe other towns have got to make, decide which committee on the legislature is handling this. And sit down and go over this with them in detail. Try and maybe get them to come up here and talk to you. Uh, as far as that's concerned is their thoughts and at least understand where the county is at, where they're thinking and what information they have.
That's good. I think also it's very important. That's a good suggestion. Yeah, those are all good. Rob, that is a great suggestion. There's one that Rob made that I found kind of important. You know, it's very hard to see when something is happening at the county level. When it's on the agenda, what's being proposed. It's very difficult on that website. I mean, it's great in some regards, but unless you know where you're going, it can be very difficult to find things. And I think one of the things we need from the county, uh, and maybe we need to be more proactive as a town is, we have to, we can't necessarily rely on the county to spoon feed us when something is going to happen like a lease assignment approval vote. We need to know that in advance. Because I, I mean, I think this is something I might have shown you. I saw some, you know. These things get passed around with memos on top of them about how quickly they want the review through and something. That whole mentality of treating airport leases has got to stop. I think one of the few ways out of this is if we actually police the leases that we have. And make it clear that if you want one millimeter off of that lease, there is going to be a required give. Because the towns are furious over this, particularly ours. So that, that's number one. The second thing is with respect to data. There, I think one of the reasons why you are not hearing more from residents is I believe that there are, cause I know I felt this myself and I've spoken to other people about this. Residents are scared about putting public complaints onto the airport website. Because they don't want to basically tar and feather either their house or their neighborhood as being a spot that is affected by this. So, I mean, there are one to two ways to handle it. One is to just understand that we've chilled people from complaining. Or maybe as a town, we have to say, listen, if you wanna do something about it, you have to come, you have to make your voice heard because we are looking at the data. And, you know, I've been complaining about this issue for a long time, but I, I've only within the last month made a complaint and it's for that very issue. Because I don't wanna be called a hypocrite over it.
Totally, I totally understand.
And there was a comment at one of the.
I, I think, I think you have.
But there was a comment at one of the airport advisory board meetings, you probably remember one of these. Where somebody said, well, let's take all the people who are breaking the V R F S, which is a voluntary flight restriction at night. And let's publish those airlines and so forth. And somebody else said, you know, who, you know, not very nice retort. So maybe we should just publish all the people who are making, you know, noise complaints and it's where we, everybody can know everything that's going on. And you know, so old school, there's, I don't think, I'm, I'm hoping that mentality is gonna change. Cause there's still a lot of people who, in the meetings that I went to, at, at the starting middle of last year, really were not convinced that there's any things happening.
Well, I mean, well, I'll point out that, that the current makeup of the airport advisory, the county's airport advisory board are all ASTRINO appointees. Most of whom have some aviation business interest. And so that's what led one of them particularly to, to make a move. Um, so, you know, that is what it is. I think I think ultimately it's, it's, it's county policy, right? And I, I wanna address the question of, you know. I don't think lobbying the board of legislators is really the right approach. Um, the board of legislators has an approval for major projects. But I believe for most things that go in the airport, they don't have to approve or, you know, have any legal oversight. And so, um, you know, lobbying the county executive is the right way to go because there are many things that that office can do unilaterally.
I, I don't know where they, that comes in. Seventy thou, seventy thousand foot add-on.
Well, no, I mean. Yeah, yeah. So that, so that was, that, that required to be all approval, right? But.
We don't, we don't, I have, I need to like a migraine, like you wouldn't believe so.
But, you know, for example, whether, um, you know, whether billionaires are complying with their lease, right? That's sole determination of the county executive, right?
But it takes his feet.
Can I ask you, trying to, I, I, at the top, I'm trying to rewind in my head all of the wonderful things that I've heard and you said.
Yeah.
At the top, you talked about issuing some sort of policy document that your group is putting out. Can you just say a little bit more about what that is?
Yes. So, so I, I put together a document recommending a number of actions that I believe the county can take to help mitigate noise problem. As well as other environmental problems. I think we have to tread very carefully because the FAA is aggressive about enforcing a law called ANCA. Which forbids local, um, laws restricting airport traffic. And so, you know, there are, there are lease provisions that I think if the county tried to enforce would be invalidated by the FAA. Um, for example, all the leases have a provision that says, you know, you will comply with the noise made procedures. Well, the FAA can come in and say, that's not your role to say because we regulate air traffic and so that lease provision is illegal and valid. Um, so, so when we try to, try to get a handle around the air traffic, we've gotta be very careful on what is legal and what is not. And, and triangulate between, you know, what's effective and legal, right? And I'm not an expert in that. I'm not a lawyer. Uh, I think there are, there are many good aviation coun, well, there's a few good aviation council that, that would have a better opinion on that.
That's one of those she's on the table too.
Well, yes, they, the county has re-upped with their existing aviation council. I think that they should have considered, um, a different person who's been, has a very good trafficker of advocating for communities affected by noise. Um, but that's sort of.
That's going to.
That's, that's neither here nor there at this point. And, and you know, the county doesn't, to my eye, the county does not have an airport policy right now.
So you're, you're, you're creating a series of recommendations for the county.
Uh, I believe Latimer.
And you, it's coming from your group and you're looking for towns to sign on to that?
Yes. I think that's, that's potentially one thing I would propose.
I'm just trying to think of kind of what our next steps are for me in this conversation, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that just occurred to me tonight, but I think, you know, in the absence of, of, of policy from anywhere, right?
It is.
If the county has no policy, if the town has no other policy, then like I'll step in and come up with something.
Yeah. So I, I think the reason I'm asking is I think one of the things that we are going to struggle with and, and we can struggle with it. But it would be great to have some backup and support on it is how do we frame this argument? How do we make this argument? And what, you know, what are our talking points essentially that we can then take into, you know, a letter that we write to the county executive?
Right.
Or, you know, whatever sort of forum and, and sort of things that we do. So if there's something that we can be looking for from you that we as a group can then sort of review and figure out, you know, are we signing on to that? Or can we leverage this in some way? I'm just trying to think, is that, is that our next step? Is that gonna come in such a way that we can sort of, um, use that as our, our sort of platform to our next step?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that's a good, uh, next step. Um, I think that, you know, this document is like something that I just wrote, right? And I, I.
Well, I mean, I'd be very interested.
You seem like a smart guy.
Well, but you have more of a background in it than we do, so you can formulate your argument in a much more cohesive and well-educated manner than we probably can.
Right.
Yes. Right, right. But what I'm saying is that like, you know, it needs vetting from, from aviation lawyers, right? For what is, what is possible, right?
Sure.
Right? And so I think a lot of what I've recommended is, is sort of simple stuff like, you know, um.
But we should, but, yeah, no, I wanna hear it, but I also think that we need to, to kind of also move on at a certain point because it's, but.
Yeah, but let's take it offline and, and happy to.
Take it offline because I think, I mean, I do think that you have a very kind of, um,
What?
You know, good understanding of the ecosystem that all of these decisions are being made in. And if you feel that there's some policy documents that the county can move forward on that is gonna improve quality of life. I'd like to know what the specific recommendations are and how we can help.
Right, okay. I mean, I think.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, I think one of the challenges here is, you know, as a layperson, I don't know how to articulate or even evaluate what the solution to the problem or even the problem is other than this wasn't happening twelve, you know, for the past twelve months.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, which is why I also think it's sort of a five-year analysis and, you know, either the data shows nothing and then we don't show it to anybody else. Or, you know, it actually shows something and we get a person who models it and it becomes a lynchman for a policy document. In a quantifiable way that people say, yes, there is a problem because, right?
Well, even soft data is gonna help too. I mean, Mara did the analysis of the planes that flew over your house, right? For twenty-four hours, you just tracked every plane. Like even that is, even that is good data, right? It's like even that, and, and even the number of members that you have in the peaceful sky group, like there's other ways that we can quantify this measure this too.
Right.
That doesn't just have to deal with, right?
They, they know.
A gentleman that lives on Hamilton, if we can get actually some, cause I might, I was thinking maybe they did move the flights a little bit to avoid some of the noise.
Yeah, that's.
Is that possible? Jonathan, do you think, I mean, I mean.
Flying over our house for last minute.
I thought maybe, I think, depending on where you are, I think.
Yeah.
As a little.
Yeah.
I think unlikely that they know they do about the noise monitor.
That's a good idea.
That's kind of like current.
Okay.
My understanding is.
And Jill, I do think we should write a letter to Latimer. He's pushing that good neighbor policy. Let him stand behind it.
Oh, absolutely.
And say, you know, we know this is coming up. We're expecting that we're gonna be consulted.
Right, that, that we need to be included in our correspondence as well as negotiations on.
Do it with, with. Yeah, I mean, he's talking about it this week at the municipal, Westchester Municipal Officers Association. Let him stand behind it.
He, he and Mike are both here on Saturday morning, right?
Yes, they are.
John, can you give us, Jonathan, could you give us, Jonathan, Jonathan, can you give us, can you give us a, a to-do list?
Emailing.
You're gonna put it to me? Okay.
Come on, you know, all, all you guys, come up with a to-do list, a perfect world to-do list for what a municipality who's, I mean, there's a lot of things we can do. But a, a to-do list about what you'd love to see us as a municipality do. And that could be a starting point for us.
Yeah, I mean, I'll try to put something together. I think, um.
Well, you guys.
You know, I think the town is better resource than a bunch of volunteers to, to get someone on this, you know, as a job, right? So like potentially you could hire someone to, to deal with this issue.
Is that best resource?
No, more than that.
All right, how much you short? Okay, I get your point. What are you, how much you looking for?
I don't need another job, but, but what I'm saying is that, that I think, um, you know, we, I, I'm happy to collaborate. I just think that, that.
That's, that's where your coalition comes in.
Right.
And when, and when is your first coming?
Oh, yes, my, our first job is due tomorrow. So we'll, we'll see about that.
We're gonna wrap this up. Eric, did you wanna say something?
Jonathan.
Thank you, thank you.
My gosh.
Yeah.
Um, just kind of one follow-up question on an environmental level. So is there any other environmental angle? Just because here we're talking about the noise pollution, spewing of pollution and wetlands.
Yeah, no, there is, there is, there is, so.
I mean, a state, is there, you know, a state complaint, not to sound litigious, but is there any kind of novel way that we can file complaints with other departments on a state level? I mean, we don't really have an EPA anymore unfortunately, but you know, is there any other route that we could be creative around addressing this with the environmental impacts beyond the SEACRA piece?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I think, you know, there was, there was some groundwater contamination issues, um, that the D E C seems to now be on top of. You know, there is, the air pollution issue is major but easily ignored. And to my knowledge, there's never been an air pollution study. So that's one angle, right? But even if you were able to come up with, you know, there's an air pollution problem, then what, right? FAA already has that all that says you can't regulate the, the planes coming into the airport. And they've also required the county to make grant assurances, right? So when the FAA gives the county money to build a hangar or to repave the runway, that as part of that, the county's promised for twenty years not to shorten the runway and not to take down the hangar. Right? So, so I agree that we need to be as creative as possible in reducing airport capacity.
And that's one of the things coming up right now is that runway repaving, the, the.
Yeah, that's, that's been kicked out the next year now, but, but.
Right, but, but still it's, that's, that's there and I don't know what leverage is around that process.
Right. No, it's not gonna stay on top of, right? And I guess my point though is that the environmental legal argument is potentially a good one to justify, um, reducing airport capacity. But ultimately it's a political question, right? Ultimately, all you're trying to do is convince the county executive to do something or to not do something.
When is he here on Saturday? Ten AM, ten AM.
Ten to eleven thirty.
And, uh, uh.
And Mike Capelance.
Mike Capelance.
Yeah.
Come keep them company.
And you got coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who supplies the coffee? The brand? With brand?
I will, I will make sure there's coffee. If it turns out that the previous administration's goal was to generate as much revenue from the airport as possible towards a privatization. If this county executive has a different perspective that he wants to make it, you know, quality of life as opposed to maximum revenues. And hopefully, you know, that there'd be some different way that they would take actions going forward.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, we gotta wrap it up there. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We gotta wrap it up. It's only been twenty-three minutes.
Yeah, it's over now.
We need to do the treaty. Okay.
I know we have to have a public hearing in the big room, but.
Nothing's gonna happen.
But we're just gonna, we're just gonna. Well, we got, I know we got a letter, I haven't even, I haven't had time to even read my own memo.
The letter came late, I have no time to read that letter yet.
Yeah, so, um, but Steve is here to talk about the law. I wonder if the board has any questions just on the the current state of it or the uh lending board memo, the revision. We got an answer back from the planning board on the question.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there's kind of a follow-up panel that the planning board did that's.
Can you tell me?
Can you tell me? Tell, tell her about it, it's been a long night.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board reviewed, yeah, picked up from where they left off from the previous one the issue that the town board had about the replacement with over, you know, with overstory trees. They're recommending now to.
How they knocked it down.
They're actually knocking it down to fifty percent.
Yeah.
Because what I explained to them is that some of the genesis of the changes with the tree replacement is to create more diverse, you know, buffers with, you know, trees, shrubs and ground covers and, you know, and they, they, once they thought about that, they understood the reasoning behind it.
Okay, good. So that was clear, that's good then, yes.
See, I could comment.
You know, the the tree ordinance, I mean, we, the major amendments overhaul of the tree ordinance was done in two thousand eleven. And what prompted, you know, the recent round of, you know, some recommended changes was just working with that ordinance for the past, you know, seven years. There's been, you know, a lot of applications in front of the planning board and, you know, ones that I issue. And so the changes in the tree ordinance really reflect, you know, areas where we felt we needed clarification and we've expanded, you know, the tree replacement and the tree bank, you know, because we've become very successful with our tree bank in terms of generating good fund where there's the opportunity to do a lot of good works with, you know, tree, tree preservation, tree planting and, you know, improving the quality of our, you know, forested community in, you know, Newcastle, so. You know, so I think that's what kind of prompted some of the, you know, reasons behind it. One of the significant things is with the replacement is the, you know, the planning board had struggled with, you know, we were getting, you know, requirements for tree replacement, but there was no incentive for the applicant to put a shrub layer in. And so that's why we came up with language to allow thirty-five percent of the tree replacement to be used, you know, for shrubs. And so, you know, it's a way to work at getting, you know, the buffer, you know, diversity that we really feel is essential for, for a lot of reasons, for privacy between people's homes, habitat, you know, what, you know, water, you know, treatment. I mean, there's a lot of really intrinsic benefits of creating, you know, that extensive, you know, layering effect, you know, that a typical forest would have.
That was what I asked you when I took out some trees, I asked you, do any use shrubs? You said no.
Creating that understory.
Yeah, so if you want, I can go through other changes, but, you know, we've, we started with, uh, we had the environmental board and conservation board and town council and then planning board, you know, review it. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback and that's been reflected in the latest draft. The planning board recommendations have not been put in the latest.
Right.
Yeah, but that, you know, will be looked at and added, you know, be- before a final draft is, you know.
So that's a question, right? Do we need direction from this board? Do you want us to take the planning board's comments and incorporate them into a revised draft?
Yeah, I liked all of them.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we're we're going to open our public hearing.
And continue it, right?
And continue it. So, um, and, you know, people, obviously, we're getting a little bit of a late start tonight, but obviously the public will have an opportunity to take a look at the newer version with the planning board changes folded in and also whatever additional public comment it's gonna, that is going to be coming in and considered by the board.
So, okay, would we continue it tonight?
Excellent question. So, we're going to start it tonight on the tenth. We would continue it to the twenty-fourth and then further if the board so determines. And today, it's really, you know, we're not particularly tight time schedule. I do know that there were some projects that uh Steve was anxious to be able to do this.
That's fine, because I'll be away for a few days and we don't.
Yeah, we'll give it day or two.
But I think, I think we can incorporate the planning board comments, I think we can.
Right, so if they're ready for the twenty-fourth, that would be fun.
Okay.
All right. Um, the next is the camp transportation day, which actually I think we have on. Is this ch- is this chaperone transport for the summer camp? Okay, it was actually on executive session, so we did both.
Oh, good.
Oh, okay, so we had discussed it already. Okay, cool. Um, gosh, it's sort of late on this one, so, um, why don't we hold the justice court, ask any traffic tickets till next, um, work session and we can talk about it?
Good, yeah.
There's, there's nothing pending, you know? Great. Um, the next is to retain professional services near quick detection, helps us save water.
Mm-hmm.
On King Street sidewalk replacement. So, we will be, um, once again, going back to one-twenty sidewalk up by Grafflin School. We're waiting for Con Ed to take and start their set, phase two of their gas replacement, gas main replacement along the road. It's going from Ridgeway Terrace down to Elm. And we will be following them with the sidewalk. So this is um construction inspection services, so this is for engineering services and the construction inspection. We've left East Harbor again. Next is Energize New York. Nick, do you wanna talk about this? Just some changes to.
Yep, so I think you have before you, there's a draft local law and a draft revised contract. Energize New York program is authorized by the local law that you town adopted. The program is being expanded to provide additional offerings, so to be able to offer that in your town, you first need to adopt, introduce, schedule a public hearing, adopt the local law, and then you would amend your agreement with Energize New York. When you have a public hearing, can they go in more detail as to what those changes are? So the action we're asking to take tonight, hey, town board, me is just to authorize scheduling a public hearing.
Next is gonna be the creation of a capital project for our LED street light replacement.
That's just accounting, putting in accounting.
Yes, exactly correct. Um, just to be able to fund it, uh, we've got payment of claims, monthly reports. We've got uh staff attending Cornell local roads pro- highway program. To see how to properly pave roads and all sorts of good things like that. We've got a banner request, approval of minutes, and the last one's just a little bit, I just need to talk to the board about it. And this was a re- request for a, um, a, a refund of a parking, um, permit, somebody missed a deadline. And so, uh, the board set deadlines by before which a parking permit refund request must be granted. They must come in, but I submitted, they missed it. So it is above the, above the authority of our town clerk and department as to be able to do it.
How much is it?
Yeah, how much was it? It was just the last quarter, right?
Twenty-five dollars.
I think that, I think it was during the, and it was during the power outages.
Fine.
So questionnaires, are you.
Fine.
Wait.
Well, but you have to have a.
Why you say fine?
Wait, 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 wait.
Right, right.
I think if I'm listening to what Nick, we can't look at these things on like, okay, well, it's fine, we'll just do it. You have to treat everybody the same and there have to be specific reasons.
Right.
Did you have objections to this one?
Not in particular, but what if we get fifteen more tomorrow?
But are you having. Right, so are you adopting a policy that do.
That's the point.
Right, I I thought the set of circumstances would be described in their, their memo to us.
But then you would have to make that available for anyone who would be in a similar situation.
I'm not, I'm sympathetic to everyone, I just know from what I've learned from Nick.
I don't think that situation is all that common.
But if fifteen people come tomorrow, you know, then we have to.
That's right, because then you're gonna be arbitrary, you're gonna be capricious, why are you, and again, you're, you're.
Right. Not that I'm not sympathetic to this, I just want, it's, it's not, I can't be really, really.
Do you receive any parking refund claims?
But people may have looked at a policy and said.
We normally, so what happens is if we tell them it's not allowed, then I'm sorry, you've missed the deadline.
It wasn't allowed.
Ninety-one percent of people say, oh, darn.
Right. Right, so if you wanted to do it, you'd have to then adopt a resolution modifying your policy due to the circumstances that you believe justify it and then allow other people to take advantage of that. You just can't have a one-shot for one person.
I understand, but I I think a lot of people just weren't gonna be leaving their houses. They weren't going to the post office, they weren't.
And I have looked at the dates and see how that works out, you also have to be comfortable.
Yeah, the deadline was March fifteenth and they said that they missed it by two days and be due to the power outages.
But do we have to.
The deadline was March fifteenth? It was not snowing on March fifteenth.
That's when the power outages were.
On March fifteenth?
The storm outages.
I don't think it was on March fifteenth, that's my daughter's birthday, I don't think there was a power outage on her birthday.
Let's see, the second storm.
Tides of Borch.
I was out, totally out of power and I was not leaving, I did not leave my driveway.
Our first storm was the second. I think we'd have been back by then.
But even, even if it was a good.
Maybe ever back.
Even if it was, they had a power outage and, and while that's, is it still something that we have to. Right, you would have to adopt a resolution saying that we amend our parking policy for this one time only to allow anyone up until May first to submit their.
And it wasn't, you could get in your car and drive to town, like, there wasn't.
Depends where you were, I don't know where she lives.
I mean, if if it was a question of just saying, fine, let's do it, but we have to sit there and do a resolution to that.
By the fifteenth.
Right, yeah, change policy, allow other people to. A little more.
I'm just saying, not that I'm not sympathetic, but I've been with you a very long time now
No, but you.
and you've always told us we can't just do things one-off, it has to be a policy because you have to treat everybody the same. Otherwise, you subject yourself to Article seventy-eights.
Right, right, and that's why we adopt a policy for the tax refunds, for water policies, and we have these policies in place for a reason. It seems like you don't even pay attention, but yet you would.
But I do, it's really amazing what I absorb.
So stop it, you can't do it, you can, you just need to, can't do it on a, or you can't do it on a case-by-case basis.
You're not saying. I don't want to debate this now.
Okay, we'll put it on for next week.
Thank you.
Okay, obsession.
Somebody listens.
Okay.
You are the guru.
Okay, great. All right, um, oh, I'm sorry, I've got one more quick thing, I apologize. Um, and that is, um, Bob Cologne came in. He, um, was, left a Eagle Scout project um, of seven flags from the Revolutionary War in nineteen to nineteen fifteen.
Wow.
By Joe Goldreiche. Um, it was his son's Eagle Scout project and he was very disappointed to find out that he had donated it to American Legion. They just put it in a closet and that was it. So he wants to know if we could find a spot for it at Town Hall. It was sort of go, they're like full-size flags, but they have little plaques explaining what they're about.
That's pretty cool.
And he, yeah, he wanted to make a donation to, the the town's, right, right, in deference.
So the American Legion unaccepted their donation?
Yeah, he, they caught it, yeah, or something. He, he said he was so disappointed, went to go see it and here's where they were and, you know, took them like down the basement, back staircase, you know, right in the closet and.
At least they knew where they were. Yeah. But still, no, it actually sounds pretty cool because flags are pretty, are very, um.
Just seem like a neat.
I wonder, it would be nice to actually put it downstairs.
That's what I thought, somewhere in the hallway. He was thinking right along, um, down here, but maybe there's a way that we can just display them.
How big are these flags?
Yeah, like full-size flags.
Are they framed, like?
No, they're standing.
Oh, they're not framed?
They're.
Oh, they're standing? They're standing flags. How many of them? Where are we gonna put them?
Seven.
Wait, 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 wait. That's a lot of space.
Yes, I.
Well, I, we could figure out a way to put them, I think we should just take them and figure it out after. Or just need to know when we're gonna put them in advance.
Just wonder if we could hang them even from the staircase going down, you know.
That's a good idea.
Like on the, the wall, hang them.
Do we have any concern about like the historic preservation of flags from the Revolutionary War?
Maybe put in the.
Should we be hanging?
Are they actual flags from the Revolutionary War?
The replicas.
The replicas. What about the.
The replicas. Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, 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 I think.
They get one for the.
The. We were the hard one on money.
No, they're, I don't think they're, I don't know.
It can't be an actual flag, that's gotta be worth a huge amount of money.
I do not know.
How about the historical society?
We should ask.
Yeah, but I wonder if the, the historical society.
Okay, well, um, I will, I, I have a story.
It's flagging, so you're gonna take that.
That might be.
I'm watching fourteen.
In case I speak to him before you or you speak to him before me. I am not speaking to anybody else. Okay, I'm a hunkrinner, I'm a hunkrinner.
So flagging for forever.
Okay, I'm flagging.
Oh, Nick.
Okay. All right, uh, motion to adjourn the session and go into Town Hall meeting.
Second.
A favor.
All right.